Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order this January 18th, 2024 regular board meeting of the school district of Haverford Township and to welcome those of you who have joined us in person and are watching on our live stream. This meeting is being recorded for later viewing on our YouTube channel. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, members of our board will read the district's mission and goals.
The mission of the school district of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are: Our school environment is safe and nurturing; Excellence in education is a shared responsibility and partnership with all district and community members; Whole child development is vital to our educational system; Supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in the areas of academic, technical and career, and social-emotional learning; and our decision-making process is student-centered and student voice is valued.
2020 to 2025 district goals. Social-emotional wellness. Produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish. Prepare contemporary citizens. Modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society. Diversity and inclusion. Establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops socio-cultural proficiency.
Thank you. Now I ask our board secretary, Mr. Anthony Testa, to please call the roll.
Thank you. Dr. King?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Dr. Shelton?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Weedman?
Here. Thanks, everybody in attendance. The next item of our agenda is the official minutes. I would welcome a motion to approve the official minutes from the January 4th, 2024 regular board meeting. Larson moved.
Moved second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Now we go to our report from our students and welcome back two representatives. We'll start with Bianca Salerno from the middle school.
Good evening, school board. My name is Bianca Salerno. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak here tonight. Everyone looks so refreshed and well-rested after that wonderful snow day on Tuesday and Wednesday. And what an honor it is to be able to thank the very people who made that call. On behalf of the entire Haverford Middle School, thank you so, so much. At HMS, winter time means hard work and fun, check; snow days, check; and winter sports teams. All of our winter sports teams are well underway, demonstrating admirable sportsmanship, teamwork, and quite a few victories here and there. Mrs. Johnston and Ms. O'Donnell, the girls' basketball coaches, took their team to Villanova Women in Sports Day last week. The girls watched a game and participated in leadership and athletic activities with players. Wednesday, January 31st, there is a pink-out to support HMS families and the Angelman Foundation. HMS Boys Basketball will have a home game versus Black Rock Middle School. I have something else to add to the list. At HMS, winter time means hard work and fun, snow days, winter sports, and winter chorus concerts. January 25th, 7th and 8th grade will have a chorus winter concert at the high school at 7:00 p.m. January 30th, the 6th grade has their chorus concert, also at the high school at 7:00. And February 2nd, the HMS Jazz Festival is at the high school at 7:00 p.m. You know those beautiful snowy dreamscapes that you hear choruses talking about? Well, now we can look outside and see exactly what they were talking about. In other extremely exciting news, HMS's production of Wonka Jr., the Musical, opens February 29th. What better way to spend your leap day year...leap year day? This cast is so full of energy, light, and sweetness. I'm so excited to be playing Violet, and I'm sure I speak for everybody in the show when I say how much fun rehearsals have been. Come on down to see our telling of this classic role-doll tale and see the auditorium as our very own chocolate factory. Shows are on February 29th, March 1st, and March 2nd. And golden tickets for the show go on sale February 5th. See you there. I'm so honored to announce that Julia Schmidt, an 8th grade student, has recently released the second installment of her trilogy. The Path of Nordana is a medieval fiction tale that follows the journey of its characters as they undertake a quest and face numerous trials that test their courage. The story involves elements of magic, sacrifice, and treachery. The book is available for purchase on Amazon Prime. I know Julia personally and have known her since 6th grade, and she is truly so hard-working and dedicated. We're so proud of her and can't wait to see what her future holds. To sum things up, at HMS, winter time means hard work and fun, snow days, winter sports, winter concerts, and school musicals. Oh, and one more thing. The Havertown Yeti, a mysterious yeti that looms around Havertown whenever it snows. No one knows who he or she is or when they will come out. Not to make assumptions, but I've never seen the Havertown Yeti in the room...in the same room as anyone in here, so it could be any of you. Keep your eyes peeled, especially tomorrow. Thank you so much for having me speak here tonight, and thank you for the snow day. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. And I think only one person in the room takes credit for the snow days. One person at the table here. And from Haverford High School, we have Erin Coyle back with us.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to present. The past few weeks have been filled with adjusted schedules and shortened classes as testing and the snow has taken place. So last week, the high school experienced key standards, which is state testing for the English 10, Algebra I, and Biology students. As Bianca already touched on, we did have off on Tuesday and Wednesday for snow, and I can say as a senior, I didn't think I was ever going to get another snow day with all the crazy weather, but I'm really happy that I was able to experience a few more. And I saw a lot of my friends go out sledding and skating down all the icy snow that just froze over, so it was definitely a lot of fun being able to experience that again. Next week, we also have adjusted schedules. We have finals taking place on Wednesday and Thursday, so Monday on Tuesday, we're going to wrap up all of our schedules, wrap up any last content, and then Wednesday, Thursday, we have testing, and Friday, we have a transition day for students and staff to get ready for the second semester that starts the following Monday. It's been a big few couple of weeks for seniors, as college applications are finalized and FAFSA finally opened, so Haverford did hold an informational night for students and parents who needed help with instructions in FAFSA. And I'm really glad that Haverford did offer this because college applications are hard as they are. So it's really nice to have that support at the high school to kind of like finalize, wrap it up, and be like, "All done." So that was really nice to have. Winter sports are killing it across the board in all years of competition, so our track-and-field team is crushing records left and right. I don't know if you've been seeing it, but Nate Donahue, Olivia Cisslack, and the Girls' Relay all broke records this week at the Armory. Swim and dive are currently undefeated as they sweep competitions. They're killing it with amazingly quick times and elegant dives. Girls' basketball is in 5th place currently in the PIAA District 1 and continues to dominate. And our Boys' Basketball partnered with our Sinus Basketball to raise money for the homeless in Delaware County in honor of MLK Junior Service Day. Wrestling won 4-1 in the Great Valley Duels, and cheer donated food to the Food Shelter in honor of MLK Day also. So that's great to see all them helping out. And for our teams in the offseason, the weight room is full after school. So we have fall sports and we have spring sports all joining in there, and then we also have a brand-new student-run club for the weightlifting club. So in open gyms, everyone's in there. It's all filled, and it's really great to see that's getting used. So students at Haverford are also continuing to bring greatness to the school in their own way as they emerge as leaders. So the National Business Honors Society created a great way to buy, rent, and sell old prom dresses and recycle them so that those beautiful prom dresses don't just sit in your closet anymore in good waste, so I thought that was such an amazing idea. The Jazz Band had a concert on Wednesday night and played a beautiful medley of songs and captured just how talented they really are. And the Mean Girls, the Musical, is continuing to work as they prepare for their big production this spring, which I'm so excited for. I've been having a lot of fun as my classes wrap up, and I'm loving my careers as we begin clinical rotations these past few weeks. So I've been to two locations so far. I saw Labor and Delivery, where I did get a speech childbirth right in front of my eyes, so that was really cool. And then I went to the Surgical ICU, which I learned more about bedside manner and post-operative care, so that was really great to see too. So I'm grateful to be able to see all aspects of the hospital and learn various medical professions at like all different levels. And I'm set to go to radiology next, so I look forward to what that has in the second semester. So I look forward to telling you anything else I see and how my classes are going, so thank you for allowing me to present and go forwards.
Thank you, girls. Always a highlight of our meetings to hear all the good goings-on at our middle school and high school. Thank you. The next section of our agenda is the superintendent's report, so I will turn it over to Dr. Ruchi.
Thank you, Ms. Weedman. Just a few announcements to start off with. The first and foremost is a very sincere and hearty thank you to our custodians, our grounds crew, our maintenance staff, the building leads, everyone who has been working, and we can anticipate what is to come for them, even though it's virtual learning that we will be engaged in tomorrow. Those staff members will be anything but virtual, that we will once again, returning hard at work, making sure that things are cleared off and well-taken care of. In addition, it's fascinating to see, we'll ask Mr. DiPaolo the next time he makes a presentation, to capture some of the video and pictures of the snow removal from our fleet of 70 buses and what that entails, and how our employees are in there at 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning, trying to get those buses ready to hit the roads. So just wanted to express, I know the board deeply appreciates that work, and I want to express that to those employees. As I mentioned, tomorrow is a day of virtual learning for us. It's...I wanted to take advantage of this point in time. It's important for us, particularly for our high school students. As Erin just mentioned, the students were...we were not in session Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. They were here today. They will return to school next week, and on Wednesday, they will start exams, which are the equivalent of finals. We are on a block schedule, so those students will conclude those classes, very similar to a college schedule that we all were probably more familiar with. Their semester ends, and after those exams, what they will return to will be brand-new classes, as if the school year is starting all over again. So that's the primary reason why virtual day was so important to us. Our teachers would have the opportunity to be with the students today. We informed them yesterday to start thinking about what they could potentially, what kind of direction and guidance they could give to students, because you probably won't be sledding, right? Work a little bit of that time, you know, in order to make sure that they are as prepared as we can, and hopefully have them being prepared for those exams. This evening, we have a team from Linwood here to highlight for us some of the special programs that are at Linwood, so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. McGilvery and the staff from Linwood. Ms. Adelisi is here with them as well.
All right. Good evening, school board, students, colleagues, community members. Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight. We are excited to share with you a little bit about our special programs at Linwood, including our special education special programs, including our autistic support program, our life skill support program, and emotional support as well. We have other special education programs as well, but those are the few that we are highlighting tonight. We have several teachers here helping us present tonight. This is Abby Spadero. She is our autistic support teacher. Kath Elko is our life skill support teacher, and Jamie White is one of our speech therapists. We're also lucky enough to have one of our incredible instructional aides here. Diane Musella is over here. We work very closely with Natalia Adelisi, the elementary special education coordinator, and one of our very supportive parents is also here tonight too, which is really great, appearing of one of our complex learners. We're going to spend some time talking with you a little bit about how we run the curriculum, what resources we use, what our schedules look like, all of the pieces we put together to make sure that our students receive the best programming and have really incredible experiences every day. A big part of what our teachers do, our therapists and our providers, our related services teams, it's a lot of collaboration and a lot of consultation with our regular education teachers, with our specials teachers, with the assistants who support in the program, with our board-certified behavior analysts. There's a lot of moving pieces on any given day, people working together very, very closely to make sure we're meeting the needs of students. A particular area of importance is the partnership with our families. We want to...it's important because we will work very, very closely with our families, and our complex learners have very different needs. They can have very different needs, and so that's an area that we really particularly value. And finally, just a little bit about the culture. We firmly believe, I mean, our team up here, the team who helps us every single day, we very much work towards building a culture of inclusion and a culture of belonging for all of our students, and firmly believe that the students who are in our Complex Learners program absolutely make our entire school community better and stronger. So we look forward to sharing with you tonight.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity. I am Abby Spadero. I am Linwood's autistic support teacher. This is a program that just started last year, and I feel very lucky to have started this. This is a picture of some of our kiddos. You can tell just by the I.A., the smiles on all of the instructional aides' face that it's something that we're incredibly proud of. So just to give you a little bit of an overview of what autistic support is, it is a class of eight students with autism as their primary disability. You might hear the term supplemental, which means that there's special education support for these students for more than 20% of the day, but less than 80%. And what's really great about that is that the other, if it's 80% of their day, that other 20% is when our students are included within the general education population. Part of our job within the autistic support classroom is to address student IEP goals. This might be in the areas of behavior or self-regulation, social skills, work skills... This might be in the areas of behavior or self-regulation, social skills, work skills, daily routines and schedules, and then early learning skills such as math, reading, and writing. You'll hear us use the term complex learners. That just means that our kiddos can have some pretty complex needs, that it's our duty and job to support. So some of our kiddos, well, all of the kiddos within the autistic support program have communication needs. You'll see the term AAC. This is maybe a low-tech core board or a high-tech communication device that Mrs. White will get into shortly. We use replacement curriculum for math, ELA, and/or writing, and this is rigorous instruction that's just leveled to the kiddos' instructional abilities so that they're able to access the content just as their general education peers. PBSP is a positive behavior support plan. That is for kiddos who have behaviors that may impede their learning or the learning of others, and we collaborate, you know, very frequently with our BCBA, which is our behavior specialist, occupational therapist, speech and language pathologist, physical therapist, and then also some of our kiddos are English language learners, which means that they speak another language other than English in the home. We have, you know, we rely heavily on our paraprofessional support. Behind every great teacher is a wonderful instructional assistant, and many of our kiddos will require adult assistance throughout the day. It could be one-to-one support, or it could be shared support. Again, not all of our kiddos do, but some in our programs will require that. And then our kiddos often require for extended school year, which is a five-week program throughout the summer in order to maintain their IEP goals and their skills so that there's no loss or retention over the summer. Another job of ours is to collaborate with the general education teachers on inclusion. So how can we best support our students within the general education environment? What adaptations, what modifications do we need to make? What equipment might they need in order for our students to be successful? Our classrooms look a little bit different. So here is a picture of the autistic support classroom. You will see that there's a lot of stuff. You'll notice that there's a break area for anyone that needs some time to self-regulate or remove themselves from the instructional area. There are student offices with dividers in order to help with focus and attention. There's a book and play area where we can target social skills, small group table and large group table. There's a teacher area and a teacher board in the back corner there. It's really important when, you know, collaborating with all the instructional staff to make sure that we're all on the same page and have a good schedule and routine. And then there's also a student board as well that we use for our class meeting. So this is a special moment from our autistic support program. This is a student that is currently in first grade. This was him last year, and he was a tough cookie to crack. He came to me not speaking any words, maybe one word here or there. I think the first word I heard from him was Christmas time, and he said, "Christmas." And I knew that there was a lot in there. He just was not showing. I would hold up alphabet pieces. There was no response. I would put alphabet pieces on the table. I would say, "Give me A." There was nothing. And one day, his paraprofessional took out a camera because she noticed what he was doing with this puzzle being presented in front of him, and this is what we were able to get on camera.
Great job. Which is nice. Nice. Check. Check, check.
It gives me goosebumps still. Very, one of my proudest moments, truly. No other words. And I'm gonna hand it over to Kath.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Elko. I'm the life skills support teacher here in Havreford. I'm the only elementary life skills teacher, so that means that any student from the five elementary schools would come into Linwood and come to my program if they choose or if they qualify. Again, as you can see with the smiles, this is a picture of us after our Thanksgiving feast we had, or no, probably before, if you look how clean the tablecloths are. But we wanted the fancy tablecloth, so I brought every tablecloth I owned into school, but you'll see. I'm not gonna go over our, this slide as detailed as Abby did, only because a lot of it's the same, you'll notice. I have six students currently in the program. Again, they qualify for supplemental level of education. One of, a little bit of difference is, because Abby and I's program, while they look very similar, they're set up very similar, they run differently because of the student needs, the individual needs of the program. We focus a lot on academics, as you can see, math, reading, writing. Our adaptive skills are a big part of our program. We're making sure our students have the independent skills to access their daily living. We also have early learning skills, learning how to be at a table, learning just how to be in school for some of our younger learners, but as they grow in the program, they already have the early learning skills, and that's when we hit them with the academics. Behavior and self-regulation, social skills, same as usual, same as what Mrs. Spadero was saying. The complex learners, again, you're gonna hear, we use the term complex learners so that we can talk about both classrooms, all students, because they do have complex needs, and they're very different. And if you ever have the luxury to come in and tour, you will see them and how wonderful all of the kids are. One big difference is we do community-based instruction in life skills. We're trying to build back that program. I think with the pandemic, things went by the wayside, so if anyone in the community or in this room has a business or any opportunities that you would love for us to come and practice generalizing our skills, we would love to hear about it. You can probably find my email on the website. Again, collaborating with general education is the most important part of our job. We want our students to access their peers and the general education as much as possible. The next slide you will see is a tour of my classroom, set up very similar to Mrs. Spadero's. We have independent workstations. We call them home bases in our program. You can't really see in the picture, but the students get to decorate with their proudest accomplishments, either worksheets or something, a fun picture that they have a lot of the time. We have one student who loves RVs, the hotels-on-wheels. He writes about them a couple times a month, and he has two RVs hanging up in his home base. You'll see a giant communication board. This is a great way that we are modeling how to use, how to speak AAC in our class throughout the day. We have a group table. We have a small group learning table and a large group, and a teacher space. We have the play area and a break station. The break station is a non-contingent break, so anytime, for us, it would be like a walk to the water cooler, or a walk to the bathroom, or to go say hi to someone else in the office. Like, that's a break. We don't need to earn it. But then a play area would be something that you would earn, just to show like there's a little bit of a difference. And a bathroom, just so we have access at all times. Oh, I'm hitting mine. There we go. Special moments. You will see, I couldn't pick between two. If I had the time, I would show you my entire Google Photos album, like any other person. This is a video, actually my paraprofessional made, of us using one of our Fun Friday lessons. This is a time where we co-teach with Mrs. White and Ms. Petra. We work on language. We work, I work on math skills, counting, measuring, fractions. I mean, no, fractions are hard. When you're talking about it with food, anybody's willing to buy in, so you'll see this, and you'll get to meet all of my kids. We made salsa. It was maybe not the most tasty salsa, but the kids love it. This next video is, was a huge moment in our lives. I think it brought a tear to any staff member in our classroom that was there, because we've, the one awesome thing is I've had the pleasure of teaching some of my students since kindergarten or first grade. And we, you'll hear about it later, our writing program is amazing, and a lot of the times, kids can use letters, and they will write different things, they'll finish sentence starters, but we kind of switched the way we were teaching writing, and this is the first time where this student was able to choose letters and then read back exactly what he meant. Like, it was the connection moment, where I'm probably gonna cry talking about it. I sent it to the mom as soon as possible, where he connected the letters and the words and was able to read it back. So, and you'll hear at the end the congratulations even in the room.
And dad, sister, dog, sister, John, mom.
Good job. How do you feel? As you can see, it's the RV. He's my RV kid. I didn't make that connection until right now. We'll wait for it to come back. And then we're now into Unique Learning System. I have a little bit more notes for this. Unique Learning System is our curriculum. It is our curriculum for language, arts, and math. The district has it. It's a program that starts in kindergarten and it is used all the way up through 21. So the students are familiar with the program and the way it's set up, but then the content, you'll see, changes. Each, this program is really amazing because it breaks down the content that is taught in the grade levels, in the each student's grade level. It's content specific to grade level, but broken down to a way where our students can access it, which then really helps with inclusion, because what we're learning in our classroom is also what their friends are learning, so in the research yard, it's common ground and they can talk about it. So it's really amazing. At the elementary level, we access two different grade levels. Go ahead, Ab. We have the elementary for our K-2 learners and intermediate for our three, four, and five, or third, fourth, and fifth grade.
We're gonna kind of volley back and forth here to explain Unique because it's used in both of our classrooms, but it's a program that we're incredibly proud of and, you know, rely on daily for our ELA and our math instruction. Here's an example of one of our guided reading stories, Hannah is Healthy. We talk about how to be healthy and take care of ourselves throughout the winter season. What's great for us is we can print out this story at three different levels, and every single one looks exactly the same. Kiddos cannot tell who was a Level 1 learner, who was a Level 3 learner. They all look exactly the same. You'll see the Level 1 is more picture-based, less text to read, little bit more text added for Level 2, and then for Level 3 is the full version of the story.
And then you'll see, this is a jump which makes the difference between an elementary grade band and a intermediate. We access two nonfiction texts, they are, they're articles. So if you can see the different levels within it, the one does not, is not symbol-supported, but then the lower level is symbol-supported, so it helps with comprehension. So again, our students are learning the same content, but we can access even their comprehension, because they can go back and see the symbols and connect it to their learning. And then every, almost everything that Unique has comes with a specific core board, a core communication board, so it helps us have conversations about their reading and their This is an example of the comprehension to the articles. You'll see a Level 3 does not have any symbol support. It's for our readers. A Level 2 has a little bit of symbol support, but it has all of the questions on the same page, and a Level 1 has one question per page. But if you notice, the language is all the same, so we still hold all kids with the same high expectations. We just give them the support they need.
Here's an example of a math worksheet for addition up to 10. And again, just reiterating the same concept, the math worksheet is exactly the same. When we do our small groups or direct instruction, we can work on 5 plus 1 using manipulatives, but Level 1 kiddos might cut and paste to match. This is the participatory level, which our goal is just full participation and active engagement. Level 2, it gives you a visual so that the students can trace the numbers, 5 plus 1, to complete the addition sentence. And at Level 3, it's the most independent. This is typical to what you might see in a kindergarten or a first-grade classroom.
And then the really cool part about this program is it does, it does help our students access those higher-level academic things that are, again, with their grade-level peers. So you'll see, these are two students who are working, who are thrilled, as you can see, working on multiplication and finding ways that we can make it visually make sense. We work on multiplication, division, there's patterns. We even move into algebra. That gets a little tricky, but it is stuff that we are teaching. Another thing, you can see, we are working on time, how to read clocks, even analog clocks. Some of even our gen ed teachers are like, "I think your kids learn more about clocks than we do at times," which I know is not true, but we do work on it. Another, this is my favorite lesson of the month, because every month we get, it's a similar thing every month, a similar theme. We, the students get to tour the building and ask other professionals a question. So this month, you'll see in their virtual learning, for the parents who are listening at home, they will, you'll see that they're gonna ask their family members, but we would ask professionals in the building, "What is your favorite exercise activity?" And then the students not only have to ask the question, listen for the response, and then mark it on a sheet like that. Then we graph our results and analyze the data.
Kath talked about this a little bit. This is their Fun Friday cooking activity that is a fan favorite across the hall in life skills. I'm not that ambitious yet. We're working on it. But what's really great is there is a weekly cooking instruction for the kiddos to follow. They are responsible for collecting the ingredients, measuring things, cutting things, and it's integrated. You know, we can hit skills like math. We can work with our occupational therapist, our speech and language pathologist on communication. You know, how did it taste? Was it easy or hard to make? And Kath was just telling me, you know, the kids came in today and said, "Are we cooking today? Hey." And not, and you know, not Friday, but next week. So you can see, it's definitely a hit in both of our classrooms.
The next is Unique Offers, our news deal is a part of the Unique family. It is a weekly current events newspaper that is given. You'll see symbol support. There's four different levels within this. You'll start seeing the themes. We also have communication boards. The one really cool thing is it's so current that a lot of the times, we read about it, and then a week or two later, somebody in the room, myself included, will be like, "Oh, I heard that on NPR," after we teach it. So you always feel cool to be ahead of NPR. We have a joke for everyone, because there's two jokes that come. This is, this is the fan favorite of everyone, so humble us, please. I have a joke.
Tell me.
What is the best ti, what is the best day to go to the beach?
I don't know. Why?
Sunday. And it, that's exactly, even the kids start picking up on that, like fake laugh, and it's Here's our first author curriculum. We, Mrs. Spadero and I, and Kayla Kizba from the high school, had the pleasure of going to the training this summer by Janet Stern. She is the author of the program. So we just wanted to give you a little bit of, an example of two of our students who, this is their writing samples. You'll see, again, these Fun Friday co-teaching lessons are helping across all academics. So you'll see in the, the student's writing sample on the left, we talk about on Friday, we cook in Mrs. Elko's room, we cook in pancakes, Mrs. White gets the ingredients. And you'll see how many sounds this student is really using to create his writing.
On the right is one of my students, and we're working on writing more. So she wrote chips. I said, "Okay, write some more." She wrote chips. And then I said, "Okay, let's write some more," and she wrote more. So I think that gives a pretty good difference between life skills and autistic support, right? Talk about literal.
One, so every week, we have an author's chair day where the students share their writing. You'll see in the middle, we have one of our kindergarten students who, that thing he's touching is a recordable switch where we're able to record his writing, and then And then he gets to hit the bu, the red button and share it. Well, he must have hit that button 17 times and you can see me giggling in the background because he was so proud to show his peers what he wrote. Um, and he loved every minute of it. And then another really special thing that First Author has done, it has connected us in the county. You'll see a picture, it was the, it's just two kids, but the whole class was able to do an off, a virtual author's chair with Colbert's, uh, class at Colbertson Elementary in Marple Newtown School District. And we were able to connect and the students shared their writing. They asked comments and questions. And our students would ask the questions of the peers in Colbertson and then they reciprocated. It was really an amazing thing.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and hand it over to Mrs. White.
Top act to follow. Mrs. Elko and Mrs. Spadero did a lot already to, you know, kind of inform you how they incorporate, um, occupational therapy, physical therapy, um, speech and language into, um, their everyday program. It is truly built into the curriculum. I am here as a speech pathologist, sharing a little bit, just a glimpse of what Mrs. Petrolibig, um, our occupational therapist would like to share. And Mrs. Granton, Lee Granton, our, um, physical therapist and myself. It's a lot of buttons to click, so I think I'm just doing this. There we go. Got it. All right. Um, Mrs. Petra wanted to share that, um, occupational therapy develops independence with functional fine motor, visual motor and visual perceptual skills. This includes functional daily living skills like unpacking and packing backpacks, managing their clothing closures. And that is a huge step beyond just those puffy coats that we have a little trouble zipping on our own. Students learn to use a variety of school tools that are incorporated every day into their learning. They use them for handwriting, drawing and visual puzzles. An area of OT that may be a little bit less familiar, um, to, uh, people who are, are not involved in education is the sensory regulation strategies and equipment that, um, can be embedded and promote calm, promote focus and participation. Some sensory strategies are used to support, um, a more regulated awareness in the areas of visual attention, uh, body awareness, balance and motion sensations. This can include movement, calm down, including breaks on trampolines and rockers, depending if you need to, um, move your body more or a little bit less. Or using sensory tools for flexible seating, um, calm deep pressure from weighted materials, um, and tools. And our complex learners also have access, um, to headphones, uh, to limit excessive noise. To office dividers, you saw these things, um, in Ms. Spadero and Mrs. Elko's visuals of their classrooms as well. Um, and there's also chew toys and tools, um, that are helpful to, um, fidget and work on sensory needs. Mrs. Granton wanted to share that physical therapy works on independent, functional mobility for access to academic environments and gross motor skills that include core strengthening, high level coordination, balance and ball skills to promote participation in peer-based physical activities and social opportunities. Sessions can be pulled out to address specific student needs. And when they are learning a brand new skill, uh, but they are also incorporated in push-in during recess on the playground, um, in the gym or on pride fields at Linwood during physical education class, um, to generalize those skills taught individually, um, in different contexts and environments. Our complex learners are multimodal communicators. If you don't know that term, that is okay. It is a mouthful. This means our students use a lot of different ways to communicate. They use their natural speech, like I am doing right now, other sounds and vocalizations, speech generating devices or core boards and symbols. We saw some communication boards that are embedded into the unique curriculum. Um, they're all over our school. If you've, um, had the pleasure to, uh, visit Linwood, I know, I think probably all of you have, um, on the board. Uh, we have them all over poster size, so, um, they're very easy to access. Um, I'm also very thrilled and honored to share that this year, um, our vision, uh, for playground communication boards, the second picture, uh, came to life. We, um, as a speech department, received a grant funded by the Haverford Education Foundation. And that added another level of accessibility to the playgrounds besides what the students carry with them every day. Um, school-based speech and language therapy targets skills, um, for anyone that needs them. But as we mentioned, they, the, every single student in our special programs receives, um, speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, and many also physical therapy. In speech and language therapy, we're working individually, small group, large group, on speech production skills, vocabulary, following directions, social language, asking, answering questions, um, sharing our opinions. And every parent's favorite, learning to protest or tell someone no. Uh, our complex learners participated in that whole class, um, session we talked about on Fun Friday. I'm getting the hint. It's time to wrap it up. So I, a highlight of my week is co-treating with Mrs. Petra and, um, along with our awesome, uh, complex learner team, the staff. So many fantastic staff members supporting the children and our teachers. Um, we love to make a recipe. We also like to get messy with the science experiments that are included, um, in the curriculum. But our news to you, current events articles are, are definitely, um, something we all look forward to. We get to make the food, eat the food together, talk about eating the food and really have like a community event. But it incorporates our, our therapies at the same time and our academics. So, um, I'm sure you can tell we're, we're all very lucky to work with our children in the complex learners, um, classrooms and, um, with the team in general.
One more, um, we call it a special program, although now, thank you, Jamie. Um, we have this program in all of our elementary schools. Very briefly, we have an emotional support program at Linwood as well. Several years ago, if we had students in need of emotional support services, they would have to go, um, travel to a different elementary school. Uh, but thanks to resources and, um, and moving those things around, we were able to bring our kids back so that they're all in our neighborhood schools. So we also service students with, um, behavioral needs, behavioral regulation needs, executive functioning needs, social skills, um, things like that. We work very closely with our instructional assistants. Uh, we can give lots of strategies like sensory breaks, um, just a, a, a time and a space for kids to de-escalate, um, along with some support. And we work closely with our home and school visitors. And finally, so our last one here, um, we are really, really lucky to have, um, first of all, this incredible team at Linwood and we also have supports outside the district. Many through the DCIU who are providing direct coaching support, um, to our teachers at Linwood. They come to us. So we have, um, excellent coaches from the IU who come and support us with the curriculum, with technology, with new programming, with pieces of the schedule. How can we make this work so that it's best for students? Um, we also coordinate, uh, some of our students who come in, work with different providers in the home and we're, we're talking to those people so that we can connect and make sure we are, um, on the, the same page as the outside providers as well. We work closely, we, lots of professional development. You could hear the specificity of so many of the programs and curriculum. A lot of training goes with that and we're lucky to have that. Um, and finally, we work really closely with a BCBA, that's a board certified behavior analyst, um, that we contract with through the center, uh, Center City, Jester County Intermediate Unit. Um, her name is Dr. Colleen Penzone. Uh, she is top-notch and she is able to guide and support our team as we are helping students, um, move forward with behavior. So, you know, I hope you caught a glimpse tonight of this incredibly passionate and dedicated team. Jamie, Abby, Kath, we are missing, um, Ashley and we're missing Petra. And a very, very strong team of our instructional assistants. We have Diane and also Michelle and Farana and Andrea and Angela and Mark and Marina. And our autistic support team with Diane, Sarah, Kate, Desiree, Christina, Mary and Erin. Um, it's important that I mention them because they are so incredibly dedicated to our students. They meet together every Friday morning with our teachers to plan for the week, talk about student needs, see what they can do. So we are really lucky to have both of these programs at Linwood. As I said earlier, the students, um, they strengthen our entire school community and it is very much, inclusion and belonging is so important to all of us. Um, and it's, it's made Linwood a, a much better place. So thank you for all of your time. We're happy to answer any questions, um, if you have any.
While our board members might be thinking of, of some questions, uh, I just want to point out, I think, I, I appreciate so much what you focused on this evening because first, as, as you mentioned, I think the dedication of this staff does come across loud, loud and clear. I also think it's nice for our board members to now have a concrete mental image of what some of these things are that we've asked them to fund over the, over the last few years. So the professional development, the support services that are available for the adults working with, with our children, um, are things that, you know, now they know what that is. When, you know, trying to, to explain it during budget time. So thank you.
I can just add that last spring, I had the opportunity to go into Linwood's autistic classroom and a first impression might be the, um, there's a lot of adults in this room helping the number of students. But what immediately shown through was the students engaged and participating. And I was there for a morning meeting and students approached it with, um, different abilities, different interests, but kind of all came together and you could tell that that routine was ingrained. They were ready, they participated and you could see the, just kind of the, the learning and how each student was, um, being involved and engaged. And it was really exciting to see. So I think this, um, presentation did a really nice job of showcasing both the, um, dedication and, and, uh, professionalism of the staff to support the program, but then how it is so student-centered and what each child needs to really, um, thrive in the academic setting. So thank you for coming in and, and giving us this presentation. Any other board members have something to add?
I just had a question about the, the, the programs and availability. I think you mentioned, uh, emotional support was at all the schools and the special ed and, um, life skills was at Linwood. Is that right?
Yes, we actually have autistic support programs in four of our elementary schools right now. Um, and we have, Linwood is the only school that houses a life skills support program.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have Carl Hogan of BP.
Different kind of warm and fuzzies.
Follow that, Carl.
Actually, I think everybody's received, uh, just to give everybody an update. I know we kind of give everybody, uh, you know, we knew where the financial results were going to end up back in December and we kind of distributed it to everybody and gave everybody a rundown, um, of where, um, the district was going to be for the year ended June 30th, 2023. Um, now we're at the point where, um, we have issued a draft audit. It's going through our quality control process. Um, the numbers aren't going to change at the time. The results of the audit aren't going to change at this time. So, um, uh, we're, I'm working with the business office. We're going to be, uh, uploading the audit to the Emma website for your bond reporting. Um, so we wanted to get this out in the board meeting in between that time period of when, um, you know, we're going to be putting that, uh, that bond reporting up. So I just picked a couple of sheets from the 70-page document regarding the June 30th, 2023 audit. Um, some of the ones I've gone over in the past and those I think they're most pertinent, um, for discussion here tonight. Um, but, but the, but the most important thing here is the independent auditor's report, um, pages one, two and three, um, with the opinion paragraph being the first paragraph basically stating that the numbers, um, being presented in the audit report are fairly stated for the year ended June 30th, 2023. As we come down a little bit down below, um, standard boilerplate report, outlining what management's responsibilities are, what our responsibilities are. But none of those responsibilities have changed and are consistent with previous periods. Um, the next page here, the only thing I'm going to point out here on this page, because I'm going to go over it, um, some of it tonight, um, being, um, what responsibility we're taking for the different sections of the audit report. Um, the required supplementary information, um, that, uh, one piece we're going to go over tonight being the budgetary comparison schedule and then also management's discussion and analysis. So what you'll see in the audit report, the first 10 pages after the audit report is management's discussion and analysis. So I encourage everybody, it's a pretty lengthy document. No, it's not user-friendly, so I would really encourage everybody to read pages four through 14. Um, just, uh, we'll give you a synopsis for 22, 23, the financial results. Also, it's an opportunity for management to, um, kind of indicate what things are on the horizon, um, related to financial activities, in particular, construction here, um, within the district. Also, I just want to point out the required supplementary information. We're not giving any opinion on it. We're just, uh, you know, making sure that's consistent with the rest of the audit report. Um, the reason why we're not giving the opinion, even though I think the budget comparison schedule is very important, is because we don't audit your budget. We just add, audit your actual numbers. And the fact that, um, you know, but it's an important schedule because it's a big part of what you do on an annual basis. So here's that budgetary comparison schedule. Might be a little hard to see, um, up there on the board. Um, but I'm just going to kind of go over it real quick. Total revenues budgeted for the year were $138 million. Um, they came in at $143 million. And as you could see, um, up at the top, the local source revenues were better than anticipated by $2.9 million. A big piece of that was your investment earnings, as everybody knows. When you went into the budget process for 22, 23, I don't think anybody anticipated we'd have a 5% federal funds rate. In addition, you had another really good year related to your real estate tax collections, realty transfer taxes. I think you continue to be, even though you were having a good year with tax collections, um, in previous years, you continue to be conservative and it was still another good year in the current year. Um, so that's, um, a big piece of that. But overall, when you're looking at 100 and, you know, $110 million of local source revenues and you're over by 2.9 as a percentage-wise, that's, uh, it's still good. Um, state source revenues, um, were $1.7 million more than anticipated. Um, this is maybe a little bit higher than you've seen in the past because you know what your state revenues were going to be, but not this year in 22, 23. Um, 22, 23, if everybody remembers, the state had not given you a final determination on some of those subsidies, like basic ed, special ed, property tax allocation. So the good, so everybody was conservative and just went with the status quo, um, amount that they were given. And, but the good news is, um, the state came through with additional appropriations for, um, all the school districts across the state. And as a result, um, you know, you had a $1.7 million, uh, positive variance there. And then with the federal source revenues, um, you had some additional COVID spending that, that caused the positive variance there. So overall, your revenues were $5.6 million over budget. So this, so then we look, um, down below, um, then you have your expenditures. As you can see in the right-hand column, I'm just going to focus, there's some ups, there's some downs. But overall, when you look at your expenditures, $4.2 million. When you take, uh, in comparison to $137 million that was budgeted, um, 4.2 over budget. A lot of that $4.2 million too, is kind of being driven by some of that state source and federal source revenues. Um, they're kind of expenditures that kind of got incurred because of, after the fact that you got the money and then you were able to expend it. And they're kind of grants that cor, kind of correspond to the revenues and expenditure. So a lot of that kind of offsets itself, um, at the end of the day. But, uh, I also like to point out too, there's some areas there too. There were some inflationary pressures that weren't anticipated, um, that also caused some of the over expenditures for 2023. As we come down below, um, we have other financing sources uses. You put a budgetary reserve, um, in for the current year. So, um, part of that $4.2 million is being offset by that budgetary reserve for the $800,000. But overall, what we want to focus on is, you know, the ins and the outs. You had a $2.1 million increase in your general fund fund balance. Um, $25.8 million was at, at the beginning of the year. Add $2.1 million and your fund balance is $27.9 million in the general fund as of June 30th, 2023. Um, the next slide is the same information that I just presented. But I just wanted to point out, we do spend a significant amount of time just recently, um, related to your capital improvement program. Um, so during the current year, um, you had some renovations that just finished up. Maybe the new Linwood that was getting the finishing touches at the beginning of the school year. Um, also you had the high school renovations that continued to happen in 2022, 2023. And in addition, you had the HVAC projects at Chatham and Cooper Town. So we'll continue to see, um, additional, you know, activity within this column in future years as you go through your capital improvement program. Also, I'd like to point out down below, um, you had, you issued some new bonds, not only to, for these capital projects, but during the current year, you were able to, um, get rid of a due refunding related to your, um, general obligation bond series of 2009 that had that interest rate swap in there that you wanted to get rid of because it's highly volatile. Um, so that's been also, um, terminated, um, during the current year. So, um, at the beginning of the year, you had $7.1 million, um, within the capital projects fund and, um, there was $1.1 million remaining to, to clean up some of the prod, projects for this phase, the capital, um, capital improvement program. This is just the balance sheet. We went over the revenues, went over the expenditures, and this is as of a point in time where your, basically your current assets are over your current liabilities. As you can see up at the top, most of your assets consist of liquid cash at the end of the year. Also, due from other governments is another big line item in assets. Due from other funds is just a timing issue. The general fund was paying some of the expenditures and the capital projects fund just needs to reimburse it from some of those big expenditures that happened during the year and that happened subsequent to June 30th, 2023. But the due from other governments is basically amounts due from the Pennsylvania Department of Education predominantly. Also, some monies from the DCIU for grants, and these are reimbursed shortly after year-end. And then your liability, the only big liability, and I think I've pointed this out in the past, your accounts payable are all current, being paid on a timely basis. But you do have accrued salaries and benefits at the end of the year. If everybody remembers, the teachers work through June 30th, but they get paid through August. So we have to accrue that service that they earn through June 30th back to June 30th, even though they're getting paid out through August. So that represents, the teacher pays, they're getting paid out in July and August. In addition, there's a pretty big PISA's payment that's made on a quarterly basis in September that's accrued for service that's accrued through June 30th, 2023. And the excess of the two, excess of the assets of the liabilities is your fund balance, and there's that $27.9 million. And in accordance with PDE, PDE says you can't have more than 8% of your next year's expenditure budget as unassigned. So the board in the past has committed fund balance for future capital projects to help supplement any kind of borrowings they need to do for the capital improvement program. And during the current year, they actually committed $2.1 million to balance the budget year that we're in now, 2023, 2024. So we had to pull that out of unassigned as well. So when we do that, the $11.1 million then is, you know, slightly below the 8%. And in accordance with PDE, which allows you to have, allow you to have an unassigned fund balance. I just wanted to kind of point out here, since you're going through the capital campaign program, this is just a quick, am I the one scrolling or is somebody else scrolling? Yeah, just scroll. This is just all the bond issues that you have. And then down at the bottom, it kind of outlines the series of, you know, 2023 that was issued on the next page, the series of 2023A and 2023B. And then we have a breakdown of all your maturities related to your debt. So as you can see, currently, your debt is about $13.1 million on an annual basis. And the last thing, I think, I don't have any other slides here, but I think some of the other important things that we need to point out, that we didn't have any issues during the audit, the audit went extremely smooth, we had transition within the business office. And, you know, I want to thank Tony and his team for being extremely responsive to us because we're always behind. And when we get, we ask questions, they're always there to, you know, provide us with the information. And, you know, hopefully you see the same thing as the school board here in terms of the business office. And we were very happy. But that's, I don't know if anybody has any questions, concerns, or...
How?
One, just one other thing, too. I just want to point out, there's other filing requirements that the business office needs to do with the state, and that was also filed on a timely basis directly that correlates to the numbers that were up here tonight.
I appreciate the good summary of a complex and lengthy document and that it highlights the strong financial condition, the strong financial management of the district. You know, we are a large operation. Last year's budget was about $140 million. And to come in within a couple of percent, it's nice to hear there was some upside from the state and the interest rate market and that we were able to fund our instruction and support services and end the year with modest surplus. And I also liked, you know, one other takeaway I have is, you know, looking at the capital funds project and see its balance diminishing shows that we're putting the dollars to work into the projects and improvements around the district. And we've got other dollars reserved for such purposes. So I think that puts us in a, in a good position to consider the next round of improvements that are coming our way.
Well, when I look at this, it just shows that you have the flexibility to be able to, you know, respond to anything that's unanticipated. But at the same time, you know, you have something put away for those one-time, non-recurring expenditures that you don't necessarily want to have to go out and borrow, borrow money for.
All right. Well, thank you. This is an agenda item later to accept the audit report. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Rishi?
That's it.
Okay. So the next section of our agenda is for public comment pertaining to items on tonight's agenda. We had nobody sign up in advance. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to board reports. The board reports are organized by the different liaison responsibilities that board members serve. The Delaware Community College, Delaware County Community College, is there a report?
Yes. So the Delaware County Community College has recently announced an early retirement from one of the board members there. And so this vacancy would create an opportunity for someone to serve for the term that would end June 30th of 2029. And so if, as it stands now, candidates for this vacancy must be residents in the school district that serves the college, which Haverford School District falls under there. There's information listed on the website in terms of the application process and just learning more about what the expectation is for someone that's interested in applying. So if there are residents that are interested, please feel free to look at the website and get more info.
Yeah, I think Haverford Township has been represented in, in that board previously.
Yes. Oh, and one, one thing, the application deadline is February 23rd of 2024. So if there is someone interested, I would just encourage you to check out the website pretty soon.
All right, thank you. From the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Kristen, do you have a report?
Yeah. So our, the DCIU board met on January 3rd. At that meeting, we approved the appointments of three, sorry, two new school directors to the DCIU board. That's Dr. Andrew Babson of Radnor, Ms. Betty McLaren of Chester Upland. And I don't believe I shared this in my report on December, but we had, we approved Ms. Rachel Holbert. She's representing Wallingford, Swarthmore. So we have some change on the board, some new members. Looking forward to working with them. We also approved some opportunities to enhance student learning and work experience, as well as to support future educators. We approved agreements with the College of New Jersey for DCIU to provide student teaching, practicum, and field experiences for students in the School of Education, as well as with Widener University for DCIU to provide field training experience for students in the counselor education program. We also approved a student affiliation agreement with Riddle Surgical Center to provide observational experiences to students in the Medical Careers Program from January 4th to January 3rd. And Erin, I believe you may be a part of that, getting to experience that firsthand. Fabulous. We also approved up to 90 students and 10 staff members to attend the Skills USA Regional Trade Skills Competition. And that will take place at the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center in Royersford on January 24th, February 6th, and February 7th. Additionally, we had a, our education committee meeting on Wednesday, January 10th. And during that committee meeting, we received a presentation on DCIU's Timeland to transition to the Science, Technology, and Engineering and Environmental Literacy and Sustainability Standards, also known as STEALS. DCIU is supporting districts' transition to STEALS, which, that is, those are PA's new science standards. And they are rooted, are aligned very closely in the Next Generation Science Standards. So we'll be hearing more about those, I'm sure. They also shared some of DCIU's continuum of supports that are going to be available to districts. These supports include explanation and dissemination of curriculum frameworks, assistance to school districts with implementation plans, providing ongoing curriculum and instructional support, developing sustained professional development, best practices connected to local and state trends, and finally, integrating STEALS to the STEM lending library that currently exists at DCIU. So as always, lots of exciting things going on. Thank you.
Thank you. For the Delaware County Legislative Council?
Just two quick updates. The budget for 2023, 2024 has finally passed with the passage of two particular bills. One is part of Act 35, which includes a lot of different provisions. But one of them, two of them that I want to just mention is, it supports the Interstate Teacher Mobility Compact, as well as requiring personal financial literacy course is now going to be mandatory across the state starting in 2026. So we are prepared and ready, which is great. And then additionally, in Act 56 that was passed in December, this allows for flexibility for instructional time amongst school districts as they're preparing calendars and looking at requirements to be not just 180 days. There's also the option of a 900 for elementary, 990 for secondary hours of instruction.
All right, thank you. From the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, Mr. Schwartz?
Sure, thanks. So four board members this past weekend were able to attend the PSBA training. Ms. Lee and Dr. Shelton did the first-time board member training. And Ms. and the three men and I did the advanced board member training. A lot of good updates on some PSBA policies and some new policies that are out there as well to be considered. So stay tuned to our policy committee. We'll see which ones of those can be discussed future. And tonight, you'll have a good time when you do that training. Definitely your thing. That's all.
All right.
But shall I just continue?
And then, yeah, we'll move on to our reports out from our recent committee meetings and finance and facilities met last week.
All right. First thing that'll be an agenda item is, I'll try to be quick with this. The, the agenda item is for a approval of the proposal from, from Crabtree for our renovations of Chatham Park. That'll be on the agenda this evening for us to, to vote on. Couple other things that were discussed. We looked at a comparison at, at Chatham Park of renovating the school versus building a brand-new school on the site. And we looked at some of the challenges building a new school, some of the costs that, that'd be associated with it. Overall, based on, on the analysis that was given to us by our consultants, the, the renovation was deemed to be a better option. Saves the district about $15 million or more. It avoids more difficult zoning approval process and potentially opposition from homeowners there. It would replace the school in a different location on the site. And just from a, a perspective of sustainability, it's much more environmentally friendly to reuse the school rather than knock one down and build another one. Plus, we've invested already in Chatham on new HVAC systems and so forth, and so forth. So this renovation would take advantage of those investments. So that was just analysis that was given, that was given to us so we could fully compare different, different ways to provide for, for students at Chatham Park. We also looked at a, at a draft of the capital improvements for the summer. Couple of big-ticket items there are things like new boilers for ones that are reaching the end of their useful life. It's, one of them is actually at Cooper Town. It's, I'm sorry, that Chestnut Wald. Hard to believe that that building is almost 20 years old now. So some of those systems need replacement to reach their 20-year life. And just as informational item there, there was an update as to the budget for this year and kind of where certain line items were. I find these, by the way, very informative. I'm glad they're getting regular reports on the budget. Clears, it helps clear up a lot of, a lot of things. It shows a lot of members of the board where money's being spent. We have the opportunity to test questions and obviously get some qualifications on some of those things. So I think it's very useful. And, yeah, other than that, I think that's basically it.
All right, thank you. And then the Curriculum and Pupil Services Committee met last Thursday as well.
So right after the commencement of the community and continued with the curriculum meeting, lots of great things that were shared during that.
Lots of great things that were shared during that meeting. One of the first things that we discussed was the Work-Study Expansion Program, which included the co-op program as well as the work-study option. It's just a great opportunity for students during their junior and/or senior year to explore opportunities to work within the community, partnering with various local businesses, offering, you know, all types of skills, whether it's resume writing, or job searching, or even just problem-solving and navigating what happens with work when things might not go as planned, or the schedule might not go as planned, or if the job is not a good match for them. So great opportunities for students to develop those skills prior to, to graduating. Lots of success stories, not just here locally, but also some out-of-state opportunities, which was pretty exciting to hear that our students have an, have an ability to participate in. As well as, there's always a student job board that's posted on the website, in addition to, to job fairs that the high school hosts for local businesses, for students to come and find part-time jobs, whether it's a winter job or summer job, or just a part-time job throughout the, the school year. Even some student-owned businesses, which I found to be just pretty amazing that there are students out there that have their own business and coming back to offer opportunities for their fellow classmates to, to potentially gain employment. The focus next for that program is just to grow student awareness as well as business awareness. Right now, the program has 20 students for this semester and 15 enroll for the following semester. And so obviously, it's just a great opportunity to continue to grow and expand as the, as the program continues. We looked at the calendar for the 2025, 2026 year. It's, it's not easy to say that, but it was the first draft, which is under review. It'll come back for possibly a board vote in February. It was mentioned that there is a continuance of exploring and tracking absences as it relates to various holidays that are not currently observed on the school calendar. But in the, the spirit of inclusivity, wanting to ensure that we are providing our students with an opportunity to celebrate their holidays, even if it's not observed through the school calendar, making sure that it is documented. And that's why the student or family may be not present in school, making sure that families know how to communicate those absences, and being sure that we are being mindful of providing that inclusive environment. And lastly, the Special Education Plan, understanding the process in terms of what goes into that 2024, 2027 planning segment there, ensuring that the programs are rooted in data, looking at when information is being presented, the cyclical monitoring for ongoing improvement, tapping the steering committee, which, steering committee, excuse me, which is made up of teachers and administrators, parents and guardians, and board members, ensuring that we're tapping all the different individuals that are involved in, in providing the best program possible for our students. There is a plan to present the Special Education Plan at the March curriculum meeting. And so looking forward to hearing more details about that and what all sorts of things may come going forth. The next curriculum meeting is Thursday, February the 8th at 7:15 p.m. And so that's also available on the website. If you're not able to come in person, feel free to check out the link. That's it.
All right, thank you. Is there a policy meeting report?
No meeting, so no report.
And then I have a couple activities to report on. Mr. Schwartz mentioned the PSBA training that several of us went to. It covered, in the advanced training, three sessions, one on policy and legal updates, school finance, and then trauma-informed education. And I just wanted to let board members know that if those are topics that you would like more content on or to engage with, PSBA has resources available online that you can get refreshers and updates and tap into that for kind of ongoing training in those areas. And then I had previously announced that we are working with the administration to help coordinate a calendar of school events that the board gets invited to, to be able to make sure we're going around and seeing activities across all of our school buildings. And so I have attended two such events. Friday, last Friday, was a wellness day at Haverford Middle School, and Mr. Haran graciously took me around. I got to see some new teachers and some teachers I had met from the days when my kids were going through the middle school. The morning started off with a No Place For Hate activity in the homerooms, and then some amazing amount of coordination must have gone on to get all of the students, whether they were sixth, seventh, or eighth graders, divided up into four different sessions where they got to pick the kind of activity that they wanted to do. The teachers shared their interests and talents and had a great range of diverse activities for the kids to find their favorite for the kids to find their favorite thing to do all across the school. And I don't know how it happened. I guess you can't walk into Haverford Middle School without bumping into one of our school board reps because we couldn't go from point A to point B without being like, there's another one, there's another one. So it was really nice to spend the morning in a day that was so fun, and the students were enjoying so much at the middle school. And then this morning, I went to the Cooper Town Community Breakfast, which I understand is a new activity, new tradition there, a monthly offering where the students and their families come in. So there were adults and some little siblings that got to tag along and come into a breakfast that was prepared with our Chartwell staff. Chef Josh was there, and pancakes and breakfast goodies. And there was a special appearance and photo ops with their cougar mascot. The kids were all excited about it. So thanks to Ms. Mastercola for inviting me to go. And it was fun to have a chance to talk to some of the families and hear, you know, things that, I haven't had an elementary student in, you know, in my life for a while. So I got to talk about sledding and 3D printers and loose teeth. So it was, it was a good morning. But do encourage the board members to check out that calendar of invites that we have, or nice opportunities to get into the schools. So now we will move on to more of the business of our agenda. The finance and facilities section is next. Item A is the bill list. I will welcome a motion to approve dispersments for payment totaling $602,740.55.
Larson moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill list is approved. Item B is the 2022-23 independent audit report. I will welcome a motion to accept the 2022-2023 independent audit report as prepared and presented by BBD LLP.
Okay, moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just a quick question on the document that we were provided. It said draft may be, may change, but this is the final report that we're going to receive.
Yes, what, what? What Carl presented tonight is now what he had indicated, like the equivalent of being proofread, but not, but the numbers, I think he even said this evening, none of the numbers are going to change. But yes, the final document actually then is posted on our website.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Audit is accepted. Item C is the design services proposal. I will accept a motion to approve the design services proposal with Crabtree, Roarbaugh, and Associates CRA for renovations at Chatham Park and the Haverford Middle School as recommended by the district owner's representative, CB Development, Inc., and subject to review by the solicitor.
Schwartz moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? This was presented as Mr. Schwartz noted at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. The next item is a PEPPM, PEPM, mini-bid. I will accept a motion to authorize the proper officers of the board to perform a PEPM mini-bid for wireless network equipment as part of E-Rate year 2024 to 2025.
Larson moved.
We're second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Could we get a brief description of what PEPM is and how it benefits us as a district financially?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
It's fun to say, too. It just rolls off.
So PEPM is, it's basically a state contract where vendors that want to sell certain equipment to school districts and other government entities within the state submit their prices for those pieces of equipment. It's listed on the website, the PEPM website. And then what we're doing here is, as part of E-Rate, they allow us to do what they call a mini-bid, where all of the wireless vendors are sent the list of equipment that we're looking for, and then they have an opportunity to then better their price or whatever it is for the quantity that we're looking for.
And what kind of improvement would this offer the district?
We're looking at the bare minimum to replace the wireless equipment at our high school. Most of our buildings have the current wireless equipment, with the exception of Linwood, which was replaced when Linwood was built, is in the seven-to-eight-year range, which in wireless world is pretty old. So we're definitely looking at the high school because it has the most densely populated computers. But we're hoping to get some pretty aggressive pricing because of the amount of access points we're looking at to possibly be able to do more of our schools this year and then finish up whatever we can this year, next year.
Any other questions?
It's more of a logistical question. So you said wireless telephones, correct?
No, it's like, it's the access points in the classrooms that all of our computers and everything would connect to.
I don't have questions. Thank you.
I had a question. So the mini-bid will go out and then it'll come back for presentation?
Yeah, so I believe, so the document will get published out to the, sent out to the vendors that are listed on PEPM as selling wireless equipment. They'll send back some proposals. We're with our E-Rate consultant to kind of review those, the responses, which ones are responsive, which ones aren't. And then at a later board meeting, we'll be bringing forward what that, what the quantities, exact costs, and everything look like.
Great, thank you.
And just for clarification, the Excel spreadsheet that that is a part of the agenda, that's listing like the types of equipment and the number? That's what that means? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So a lot of pieces of equipment.
Yes.
Is installation part of the bid as well? Or is it just for the equipment? And who does the installation?
The district always does the installations of that. Yep.
Good discussion. So we had the first and second and the helpful additional information. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Section seven of our agenda is for Human Resources Matters. Item A is appointments. I will accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below, contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act 168 of 2014.
Vatali moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointments are approved. Item B is for leave of absence. I will accept a motion to approve the following leave requests.
King moved. Vatali second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is for a professional employee. I will welcome a motion to recognize the following temporary professional employee who has fulfilled the three-year probationary period required by law and having received satisfactory ratings during this period has met eligibility to receive their professional employee contract effective January 9th, 2024.
Lee moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Always exciting.
Yeah, good milestone. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section eight of our agenda is for pupil services. Item A is a professional services contract. I will accept a motion to approve the following proposal for professional services through the CCIU for the 2023-2024 school year.
Okay, moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just a quick question about logistics. I know we have the ELA audit going on concurrently. Is, do we have any concerns about capacity, ability to take this on? I know it's going through CCIU, but just in terms of the internal team?
It's a different group of people.
So there's no overlap between?
This is not coming along.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a different, different group of staff members who would be involved.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next section of our agenda where we have business to attend to is the policy section. Item A is Policy 601. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 601 objectives for financial practices.
Sluggs moved.
Vatali second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
There's, looks like we have three policies up for adoption tonight.
No, just the one.
The other two are second reading. So this is the only one up for adoption. I don't think there were any changes since the last reading, which was the second reading in tonight. So the board has seen this two times before tonight, and it was previously in the policy committee. So that's what we're seeing here. And I don't, there's more discussion on the board. Happy to hear it, but we have seen this one several times.
And it is a pretty brief statement of, you know, our purpose for managing our financial affairs.
Right, so the policy committee decided to look at the financial practices and the 600 series to split it up and, or split some things up and merge other things together so that they were more consistent and reflected our current practice. And that's what this one reflects.
Just one very small formatting thing because it's driving me crazy. Between lines three and four, if we could just have a space to be consistent with the other lines.
Oh, so.
A return?
I just need a return.
Okay. I think we can do that without.
I think I've mentioned before I have yearbook editing in my background, so I appreciate a good formatting.
Things just like jump out at me. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor of adopting Policy 601?
Aye.
Any opposed? 601 is done. Item B is for Policy 216. I will accept a motion to accept the second reading of Policy 216, Student Records and its corresponding AR, or Administrative Regulations.
Sluggs moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This one is a second reading, so it went through the policy committee and then a first reading of the board last time. I'm not sure if there's been any provisions.
No changes.
Okay, no changes to this one. So it just continues to reflect the revisions that the policy committee discussed and that were presented last time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading is approved. The final policy for tonight is 303. I will accept a motion to accept the second reading of Policy 303, Employment of District Staff and its corresponding AR.
Moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is another one we have for a second reading. I don't think there were any changes here either. I don't see any reflected. So we have both the policy and the AR, which we presented last time when we presented it for our first reading, and reflect the policies, the policy committee's changes on the, this one, employment of district staff.
And this is another one where we are kind of consolidating what had been three separate, separate categories of employment policies into one policy to make it more consistent and easier for folks to follow. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next section of our agenda is for public comments on other items, and we had one person sign up. The Board Values Public Comment is an essential component of school governance that adds information to the deliberation of the important and complex matters that come before the board. It is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. And our board meetings are an opportunity for us all to model good government for the engaged citizens our students will become. This, our board agenda is posted onto Board Docs so people know to request time for items on the agenda or not. Residents of the township may, in advance of the meeting, sign up to make public comment by emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net. Per our board policy, you will have three minutes. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound, and you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Please begin your comments by stating your name and confirming your residency in Haverford Township. If you have materials to distribute, please leave them at the end of the board table. Your name and the topic of your comments will be recorded in the minutes, and your presentation is broadcast as part of our meeting. If appropriate, an administrator or I will follow up with speakers to discuss or respond to issues raised. And the person who signed up is Victoria Brown.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Brown, and I live on East Manoa Road in Haverford. So two weeks ago, I listened very, very carefully to a public comment about HB 301. That comment used nine lines of a 37-line summary of a 700-page bill to claim that a legislative attempt to improve school safety means, quote, "There will be further laws surrounding our children, the children that we, parents, birth." Passing a new school safety law is, quote, "extremely dangerous and unconstitutional" because such state action supports the, quote, "federal government's position that, quote, 'children are property, the children that we provide to the school district.'" And passage of a bill aimed at improving school safety means, quote, "schools will be permitted to advance their beliefs onto our children." I am not here because I learned anything about HB 301 from that comment. I'm here because that comment taught me that parents' rights advocates believe that America's parents are in a custody battle with the public school system, that parents birth children who the government defines as property to be provided to the schools where their beliefs, the school's beliefs, are imposed on our children. So it's us against them. It's parental ownership of children against community care. This comment closed with a stern reminder to board members, you are elected officials. And that's true. Just 10 weeks ago, the voters of Haverford Township elected five of you by a margin of 66%, making very clear that they do not endorse the custody battle view of our community's schools and do not agree that schools are imposing beliefs that are contrary to the beliefs held by the community majority. Even in Ward Nine, where only 44% supported the progressive candidate for Township Commissioner, over 50% of those same voters supported the school board candidates who won so decisively. So some voters in Ward Nine purposely split their ticket in order to say no to the custody battle view of public education. Now, anyone has a right to argue for the custody battle position. I just wanted to point out that advocates for that position keep losing elections in Haverford and all around the country. So it appears that most of us think we are all in this together, agreeing and disagreeing, making mistakes and correcting for them, but generally supporting the goodwill partnership of parents and educators. At least that's how I read the data, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wished to make a public comment tonight? The next section of our agenda is for the Report on Executive Session. The board met in executive session tonight prior to tonight's meeting to discuss, one, a confidential personnel matter, and, two, a negotiation strategy related to labor relations. The board also discussed litigation matters with council, including a matter initiated against the district in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County at docket number 23-010364. The next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on February 1st, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. And with that, I welcome a motion to adjourn.